Well, I guess we can start. Well, it's 6:30, so I'll call the regular Starbucks City Council meeting for February 8th to order, and we'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you could call the roll, please, Jim.
Mayor Swenson?
Here.
Councilman Gorder?
Here.
Councilwoman Backle?
Yes.
Councilman Tate?
Here.
Okay. The first item on the agenda is the consent agenda, and are there any questions or discussion regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
Okay. So, hearing no more further discussion, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. The first item on the agenda is the proposed marine project, and one of the proposals, proponents of the proposal asked to be on the agenda, so we asked them both to be on the agenda. And we're not inviting any comments from the audience, we're just gonna hear from the proponents of the proposal, so I'll start out and call Casey Botain. He went last, last time, so he can go first this time, so. Thank you, Casey.
Can you hear me?
Perfect.
I'm just here, just as a follow-up from the public, or the work session that we had a week and a half ago. I'll just, I'm Casey Botain, I own Glacier Lakes Recreation on the south side of town. For anybody in the room that doesn't, isn't familiar with this, then a couple of weeks ago, we had a work session here that I was asked to bring a plan or proposal on a marina in the, off the city park or the beach parking lot. I brought a plan that was more of a concept that laid out how the city could own it and operate it. It wasn't, it wasn't a real detailed proposal, but just, like I say, a concept. After the meeting, it was requested that I provide a little more information on how I came up with that concept and some of the numbers, so I emailed a more detailed proposal to the council, which I hope you all received. Just to recap that a little bit for everyone, the, the idea is that the city could own it, operate it as an extension of like Hobo Park and the Hobo Campground. You're already in the rental business, business. It, Hobo Park and the, and the marina obviously generate revenue for the city, this could add to that. My plan is flexible, so the city does not have a substantial risk. It could cash flow in year one, cash flow is substantial after the infrastructure's paid for, and, you know, the biggest thing is the risk is capped at the investment of the dock. It could always be sold, transferred to a private type deal if it didn't work for the city. But the biggest thing for that plan is there's no long-term lease that the city is beholden to. So, really, the only reason I'm here is to follow up from the proposal, and want to know if you guys have any questions on that or need any further information from me. It's really just, hopefully, it was just information that can get you guys whatever you need to kind of move forward with some sort of plan. I know that you're not all familiar with exact marina specifications and dock and lifts and rentals, and it's a lot, there's a lot of variables that could go in there. So, again, the concept was literally just to try to get you a wealth of information, an idea of what it could look like, and, you know, hopefully, you can use that as a tool to make it, make a, you know, an informed decision. And if it's something that, that does work, like, it is a plan, like, it, it, we can, you know, we can jump on it, so. Again, I'll just, anyone have any questions from the council?
I should have prefaced my remarks or calling you up by saying that the question before the council tonight is whether we want a city-owned marina or some other form of arrangement where the city would, you know, provide a lease and access to a, to a marina. So, with that, if there's any other questions on the council, now's the time to ask them, so.
Can I, can I ask if there's anyone behind me that has any questions for that sort of thing and answer a question?
Well... No.
Okay.
We've, I think, heard most of the opinions in the, in the public hearing.
I wasn't necessarily want to hear opinions, I just didn't know if there's any questions that, you know, technical...
Well, yeah, if there's questions, you know, for...
And I'll, I'll say that if anybody has any questions for me, you can, you guys can grab me after or whatever. I do have a few copies of the plan, the, the concept, some of what I sent you guys in the email is a little more detailed than I'm willing to share, you know, because there's some numbers and how everything could work, but if somebody wants to see the drawing or the overall concept that I originally submitted in the work session, I have a few copies, I'd be happy to share that.
If you want to ask the audience if there's any questions for you, go right ahead, and...
Anybody got any questions behind me? Oh, okay, that's all I got.
Okay. Thank you, Casey. Next, we'd like to hear from Minnewaska Marine, Tedra Zink.
Good evening. You all pretty much know, I guess with my proposal that I gave you guys last work session, what we were proposing, I just came and, if you had any questions on it, and was there any comments or anything?
Ted, Steve Gorder here. Your proposal would be to, for it to be privately owned, is that correct?
Privately owned, yes.
And you would, you would work out a lease with the city, then?
Correct, correct. Sit down and go through numbers and, and then deal with the city council.
And you would, you would carry the insurance and all the, you'd be responsible for virtually everything there with the exception of the payment?
Yes.
You'd be responsible for the lease?
Yep. We'd have liability insurance and, of course, our product insurance.
And you would own the whole entity at that point?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to know how Casey would deal with that, in his proposal. If the city owns it, how would then, would that, how would that all work? Ask the questions of both of the proposers, please.
Well, if the city owns it, the city would have to carry the insurance.
No, you don't, no, you're not on the city council anymore.
Well, we don't want any input from the, of the audience.
You're not getting it from me. Ask Casey the same questions you asked him.
Any other questions, I guess?
I have none.
Who else?
Are you, you have any questions?
No. Because, you know, the, the test was, if one way or the other, we'd have to sit down, we'd have to sit down. It would be a very ten-pointed thing, no matter what we did.
Yes. Yep. You know, basically, we followed Glenwood's, what they have in action right now on their marina rental over there, is what we use for a marina agreement, so. Nothing else?
Chris, did you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Okay. I'm gonna ask some of our city employees, or two of our city employees that deal with the day-to-day operation and provision of services to the city and, and handle our finances, and so I'm gonna call on Randy Peterson, our water and sanitation supervisor, to say a few words.
Yeah, I just wanted to say kind of what the public works, where we kind of sit with everything. The city of Starbucks has two full-time employees that take care of all the public works departments, including water, wastewater streets, airport, and marina. We also are making our own docks for our own marina. In the springtime, we are taking old docks out and putting them in. So, spring and fall, we're very busy. Fall, we also have bio-solids hauling, hydrant flushing, current marina, taking it in and putting it out, and mowing, not to mention construction projects in the regular day-to-day. Adding another marina to the mix would, we just don't have the manpower to take care of it. Spring and the fall, you could contract it out, but it still leaves a lot of what-ifs, the daily concerns that come up. You got wind damage, you lose dock panels, broken welds, missing bolts. Who would take care of that during, during the summer? If you end up getting a storm, when you get power lines down and trees down, and you get flooding basements and lift stations, can't keep up power outages, we'll be busy with that. We don't have the time to deal with a dock structure that's falling apart and people that want to get on it to take care of their boats. Who would take care of that? You got vandalism, boat damage to the docks, general repair. We don't have the boat, the barge, welders to do these repairs, or the equipment to do it. Not to mention, you get a lot of office calls and complaints, like with our current marina, people just calling about random things, a dock is wobbly or slippery, or they want a handrail put somewhere. If the city owned it, we'd have to deal with all that stuff also. Let's see. Also, like, on the weekends, you're gonna get calls and complaints on weekends and holidays. Let's say, let's say there's a gate at the door, somebody lost their key, they can't get in to get at their boat. Who would deal with something like that? If we own the boat lifts, you're gonna have broken cables and that kind of stuff. Who would deal with that? We have aluminum docks at our boat landings, at our current boat landings on the north and south side. It just seemed like when the public was using them, they were broke a lot. I just have some concerns about a big aluminum dock structure with the public using them. They kind of get hit and broken, and we don't have the welders and equipment or the ability to take a section out and get it repaired. It's gonna take a lot of time and money for the upkeep. We're currently trying to replace the marina and dock sections that we have. It's probably gonna take about 10 years and at least $500,000 probably. So, we're kind of in the middle of that also. I'm just afraid that taking on another marina, it's a lot of investment when we're currently trying to replace the one we have. Also, for, for the contract, if you did hire them to take it in and out, who is gonna do the daily stuff? And what happens if they don't want to take it in and out at the end of the year or beginning of the year, or they're too busy and we can't find somebody else? I mean, there's just, there's just two of us, and it's hard to find help, especially to do that kind of work. And the insurance cost also, if you have a lot of, a lot of insurance claims, it's gonna make the rest of the city's insurance costs go up. I just have lots of questions and concerns that I don't have the answers to. I feel it's a safer option to just have a private one where we know that we're gonna bring some money in, and we don't have the risk and all the unknowns. I guess that's my feeling, I don't know.
Randy, you met, yes, this is I. You mentioned the docks and, that we're putting in at the marina. I just wanted to point out that everybody thinks marinas make money, and, you know, we've got 100 slips in the current marina, which bring in about $400 a piece, so that's $40,000. And we're spending, what, $54,000 this year just to put in a small, replace a small portion of the docks, so, you know, we're not...
And there's, there's a lot of costs that you don't think about also. You look at our current marina, for, we put the docks in, now we're replacing them 30 years later. We had to dredge the marina. You've got the cost of replacing the roads, there's $200,000 in the capital improvement plan for the lighting. We put, we put posts in to kind of keep us going by, but you do the math on it all and what the marina brought in over them years, it's just because it's a, you've got money coming in some years, there's a lot of money that goes into it to keep it going too, and I'm just afraid this one would be the same way where, it might sound good, but there's a lot of unexpected things that come up.
Yeah, and, you know, I'd just like to add, I guess, that your time and Mike's time and, and the time that the summer employees spend mowing around the marina and so forth, all those costs aren't, you know...
Yep.
...taken into account, so. But, okay. Well, thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Ask a question?
Sure, if it's for Randy, you can ask.
For Randy, for you, will you guys be, entertain an idea to privatize the entire marina in Hobo Park? Because that's what it sounds like, your, your, your public works guy. He doesn't want anything to do with anything docks, except for building them. Let's private...
That's not a question, Casey.
Let's private, I'm asking, is it for sale?
No.
Then why is the city parked? Because it's the same, it's the same thing.
Okay. Next, we'd like to hear from our clerk treasurer, Joan Kirkley.
Well, my feelings on this are strictly from a financial standpoint. The city has some large expenses coming up in 2021. The final numbers from the road project aren't in. Final assessments on the road project won't be completed till later this summer. The city council has asked everyone to try to cut their budgets by 10%, and the marina project isn't in the budget for 2021. So, I guess my feeling is that this would not be the year to do it, maybe not next year either, but just from a fund standpoint, that's my feeling on it, so.
Thank you, Joan. As a member of the council, I'm gonna make a, read a statement, and...
As a member of the council, I'm gonna read a statement that I thought about and spent quite a bit of time on. Starbucks is a Plan A statutory city with a council and a weak mayor structure. The mayor is a member of the council that has no more power than any other member of the council. But like any member of the council, the mayor can participate in discussions, make motions or second motions, and can vote, if necessary, on motions. The mayor is also the presiding member of the council meetings and is responsible for the orderly conduct of meetings that are focused on the approved agenda items. And I'd just like to quote from the Minnesota Mayors Association handbook that states that a mayor has a responsibility to their constituents, council colleagues, and staff, and equally important to the office they hold and will eventually pass on to others. The handbook goes on to say that while it is sometimes appropriate to respond to the needs of individuals, in other instances, they must act for the betterment of the whole community, even when some residents may not like it. At the January 11th public hearing on the issue of potential marina access from public land, we heard from constituents, businesses, businesses, and summer residents. All generally acknowledge the need and desirability of another marina accessible from public park property. At a scheduled city council work session held on January 28th, the council was presented with proposals from two local businesses, Glacier Lakes Recreation and Minnewaska Marine. One proposal was for the potential new marina to be city-owned and operated, accessible from public park property. The other proposal was for a privately-owned and operated marina within the city, providing, with the city providing access and parking from public park property under a lease agreement. While both proposals would provide additional potential revenue for the city and would benefit public boat owners seeking such facilities, and would benefit our local city businesses and local marine dealers, the diametrically opposed proposals have left the city council in the position of choosing between a city-owned marina or a privately-operated marina. Constituents and others have provided the council with a great deal of input through their testimony at our city council meetings, public hearings, personal discussions, as well as newspaper coverage, letters to the editor, radio station coverage, and social media posts. The council takes all input and into account and does their best to get the input of all citizens, including those citizens who may not read the paper, read the newspaper, listen to a particular radio station, or use social media. We have also heard from two city employees who handle the hard work of day-to-day operation of city services and manage our finances. Some people have asked why a decision needs to be made so quickly. Why can't this wait until 2022? With the pandemic, local businesses, businesses have suffered losses, and they need to be able to look forward to a busy summer season. People are anxious to safely get outdoors and enjoy our wonderful Lake Minnewaska resources. If we do not proceed to fill this need this year, the consequences for the city will be more pontoons moored at the beach, some overnight, more safety problems with kids and adults crossing the highway, and more enforcement problems for our police department. We may also see potential summertime residents who decide to look elsewhere for their summer recreation. We need to provide appropriate accommodations for our summer residents who spend a lot of money in town, support our businesses, and are so vital to Starbucks and our future viability as a more thriving community. We must also take into account the city's financial position. Cities like the state have to balance their budgets. The fact that we have gone through a major road reconstruction and an absolutely necessary infrastructure replacement project of our 60- to 80-year-old water and sewer mains, and in addition to the up, and in addition to the upgrade of our crumbling sewer pump station, pumping stations, and a larger force main that has obligated the city, cities' taxpayers for the repayment of, of more than $2 million of debt. And that road project, as Joan mentioned, is not completely done, nor have we gone through a final walkthrough with MINDOT or paid for our portion of the movement of two streetlights between Third and Fourth Streets, or purchased street amenities like benches and tables, trash cans, planters, or bicycle racks, and so forth. Payment of the balance due of approximately $1,021,198 plus interest on our temporary construction bridge loan with Eagle Bank is due later this month. Payments on our public facilities authority loan from the state will be small this year. Water infrastructure payments will be $8,773, and sewer payments will be $11,852. However, these payments are due to increase substantially next year to $54,390 for water infrastructure and $85,700 for sewer. These payments of approximately $140,000 per year continue through the year 2040. Until we get the final cost figures from MINDOT, we cannot figure nor go through the process of determining what final assessments for the street project, or what the final assessments for the street project will be, which is absolutely necessary to partially pay for the project. And Joan mentioned that, you know, hopefully, we'd have, go through the assessment process by next summer. That's being optimistic, I think. I talked to Dave Iverson, the city administrator in Glenwood, and I, they've only recently received their final figures from MINDOT for their street project. And theirs was done in 2018, that was over two years ago, or two years ago approximately, so. You know, and such a delay for Starbucks may very well put the city in a financial bind next year, when PFA payments increase and taxes may have to be increased to cover these payments. This does not include unforeseen expenditures or capital improvements like refurbishing or replacing the taller water tower, which provides water to half the city, which recently is, reasons last summer sprung a leak, which had to be repaired. The cost would be a minimum of $75,000 to refurbish the water tower, and a lot more, possibly several hundred thousand, to replace the tower, which has a design life of 40 years and has been in service for 36 years to date. Nor does include the need to upgrade our aging city office computer system to allow backup of all data, which we'll talk about later tonight, or to provide better security of our computer system and replacement of outdated software that is hindering city operations. It's also causing a problem with not being able to back up all our data, which is, is not a good thing. Additionally, the city's 2021 budget shows roughly $200,000 deficit, mainly due to the city's portion of the road, resurfacing portion of the road project. The city council has issued a letter to department heads requesting a review of their budget with the intent of a 10% decrease across the board. It would be irresponsible to ask departments to take a meat cleaver to their budgets when the council proposes to incur additional debt to purchase, install, manage, and operate, or can contract out for a new marina. If the city were to own the proposed marina, we would undoubtedly have to hire additional personnel to handle daily customer rentals, installations, complaints, repairs, replacement of equipment, or equipment adjustments, or we would incur the cost of contracting for these services. The city would have to purchase replacement parts or equipment and store them someplace to have on hand, or that would also have to be contracted for. The city would also assume all the risks, assume additional financing costs, insurance costs, and administrative costs. Taxes would definitely have to be raised to fund additional staff or fund contracts for initial infrastructure, operation, and maintenance. From a philosophical standpoint, I do not believe that government should be in the position of owning businesses when private industry or private enterprise is capable and available to provide the same or better services or products. This being a primary consideration, and acknowledging the good intentions of the proposals put forward, and all the foregoing considerations, I will not, as long as I hold office, compromise my principles and leave the city in a worse financial position for my successors. To assume unnecessary, or I will not assume unnecessary risk or raise taxes unless absolutely necessary. Therefore, my position will be against a city-owned marina. Thank you. If anyone, anybody else on the council have any questions or discussion? If anyone, anybody else on the council have any questions or discussion?
Having heard from Mayor Swenson, Randy Peterson and Joan Kirkfleet and Casey and Ted Ruzink, and considering all the facts and everything that we've heard and in looking at both proposals, at this point, I would like to make a motion that we move forward with the privately owned Ted Ruzink proposal.
Excuse me, isn't there a third option of not doing anything this year as Joan recommended? She was a city employee and she had something decent to say, that this is not a time to go hastily into something that we don't, can't afford or don't know what we're doing. Let's let it go.
Please suspend, you know, we didn't ask for comments from, from the audience. Thank you.
Gary, I did have a question though. Are, is?
We aren't taking questions.
We aren't taking questions, David. No. You're welcome, you're welcome to talk to the council at any time, any of the council members and so forth and all the city staff and they can give you information that you need, so.
I'll see how this is going to go.
Well, you can talk to me, David.
I see how this is going to go.
We have to make decisions, so not everybody's going to.
This sort of borderline is a question I had, is, does borderline your decision? Being out of Hobble Park, paying $5,000 a year in security and patrol, are they going to do the same for down there?
That's, that's not on our agenda and so.
Gary, can I, can I ask a question about Councilman Gorder's motion here, him specifically?
Sure.
Is your motion to accept his plan as proposed or is your motion to consider a private lease? Are you going, are you looking for other proposals? Because that was in the work session, you asked me that, would I submit a private proposal if you decided to go that route?
Casey, I'll answer that and the question.
You asked him about his, he made a motion.
Casey, I'll answer that. The question before the council tonight is whether it's going to be city-owned or private, you know, some arrangement for that. And we're not accepting anybody's proposal tonight.
Well, his, his motion said to, to accept Ted's proposal.
It did, and I was going to ask him to amend that proposal.
Thank you.
Okay, I will, I will amend the proposal to state that we'd move forward with privately owned marina.
So your motion, Councilman Gorder is to propose that we not have a city-owned marina?
That is correct.
Is that correct?
That's correct.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
We have a motion for Councilman Gorder to not have the city own a marina, any potential marina and seconded by Councilman Gorder. Do I hear any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign. And I think Joan would like to make a roll call vote on this and so I'll start with Councilwoman Balko. What's your vote?
I want private owned.
Yes or no? Yea or nay?
Yes for private owned.
Okay, Councilman Tafe?
Yea.
Councilman Gorder?
Yes.
And I've stated my views, so that's a yea also. That is not going to end the discussion. We'll probably have more public hearings and as we move forward from here, so, but that's the decision we're making tonight and we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. Next on the agenda, we have Nick Kuss from, from Woodseth, our engineering firm.
Hi, good evening. I'm Nick Kuss with Woodseth. I'm going to give an update on the projects that are currently being wrapped up and, and just starting. The lift station rehab project is complete and Randy indicated the, the pumps are running good.
Yep.
Fantastic. And the MINDOT road project, there's no update at this time. There's still processing paperwork from the work they did this summer, so that'll kind of be ongoing through the winter and then final punchless stuff will start up in the spring, so it's kind of on hold during the cold months. And then the multi-use trail on Trunk Highway 29 between the Waters Edge and the South Beach, the beach parking lot. MINDOT provided some feedback on the plans and requested some additional changes, so I responded to their comments and will be policing up the changes that they requested and then that should be able to move forward.
Okay.
Pending their approval. That's, any questions of me?
Any questions for Nick Kuss? Okay, appreciate it, thank you, Nick.
Yep, thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is myself and I just like to mention that I received a letter today asking for my resignation and I'm going to take it under advisement and give it all due consideration and so just wanted everybody to be aware of that. The next item that we wanted to talk about is starry stone wart and in the marina, the existing marina, which we've, we've talked about a lot in past meetings and so forth. We have to decide what we're going to do this year and we've had proposals from the AIS consulting firm, which is proposing that we again do hand removal of starry stone wart from the marina. And they also recommended that we do three chemical treatments, one hand pulling treatment and three chemical treatments. I think when we discussed this last time, the council is a little leery of doing chemical treatments. The two applicators that have done it in the past, Lakes Restoration out of Rogers and, and PLM out of Savage, Minnesota, both declined to submit proposals for this year. And so we've been looking for other people that might do chemical treatments and Joan, I, I don't know what, what was the name of that?
Clark.
Clark?
And they're out of Clearwater.
Clark out of Clearwater said they would submit a proposal to us and I, we haven't received it yet, so. But I guess the, and I did talk to Mike Sty of the Lakes, or the Lake Association today also, and they're going to be monitoring for Asian mill foil and so forth in the lake this year too. And so we just kind of talked over where things stand with starry stone wart and everything. And so I guess that's the, you know, what we have to decide as we go forward, how they're going to treat the starry stone wart and keep the marina open, whether we're going to, whether we do hand pulling or whether we incorporate some chemical treatments. If we do any chemical treatments, our lease agreement is going to be very specific that we'll notify boat owners to the best of our ability and give them the opportunity to take their boats out of the water for any period of time that they feel is necessary to, to avoid any, you know, corrosion or anything that might have happened in the past, which we still don't have a definite cause for, but a lot of people think it was the chemical treatments, but so. With that, I would ask the council what their thoughts are and, and how, how we should move forward with the treatment of the starry stone wart in the marina.
Personally, I think we had pretty good results last year from the hand removal and I really would prefer to go that route again this year and try and avoid the chemical treatment if at all possible.
I agree with Steve. I think we should try to do one, if not two, pullings of them by hand.
Okay. Balko?
Yeah, I like that idea too.
You know, I guess there is some scientific evidence probably that would call for some chemical treatment and I guess at this time we have to proceed with, with some plan before time runs out here because the applicators and, or the people that do the hand pulling have to get a DNR permit and so forth, so, and that takes time. So I guess my opinion would be that we see what this proposal is for chemical treatment and, and go ahead and continue our conversation with AIS Consulting and, and develop a plan that we can go forward with and, and treat the starry stone warts. So I appreciate everybody's input. Does anybody have a motion on how we should proceed at this point?
I think, I think we need to at least look at the, was it Clark's out of Clearwater that, and see what they come up with for a bit. I, I don't know at this point that I'd want to recommend we do, do it. I guess I want to see more information and a cost involved and because I, I have a strong feeling that the hand removal is probably the, the better way to go and, but we do have to look at, at our other options as well. So I would make a motion that we look at both options before we move forward with this.
We have a motion on the floor to look into our options for treatment of the starry stone wart and at this point, and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second from Councilman Tafe on the motion by Councilman Gorder. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, motion carried. Next on the agenda, as we announced at the last work session, I believe it was, that former councilman Ted Ruzink has resigned from the council and we just have to have the council accept or reject that, so I'll entertain a motion to, any motion in that
I'll accept that, we accept Ted's resignation.
Okay.
January 27th.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. The only thing I wanted to add, we have a motion and a second, but the only thing I wanted to add is that the newspaper stories and some of the other social media inputs and so forth have indicated that there was a conflict of interest and I think when we announced the resignation, we, we said that the resignation was to avoid any potential conflict of interest, so I just wanted to state that for the record. So we have a motion by Councilman, or Councilwoman Balko to accept Ted Ruzink's resignation, seconded by Councilman Tafe. And is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign, motion carried. We're now going to move on to the next agenda item, which, which is with the resignation of Council, Ted Ruzink from the council, we need to consider filling his vacant seat. We have two people that have expressed interest in the position and one being Chris Gandred Gueraki and the other Jill Hanson. And so I don't know if there's any discussion on the council or any questions that anybody wants to ask either of them or otherwise I'll entertain a motion to appoint somebody to the council.
With, with respect to both parties, I know Jill Hanson has been on the Planning and Zoning Commission since 2016 and has, has worked well with the city council in that regard and because of her affiliation with that and I think at this point I'd like to recommend we appoint Jill Hanson.
Okay, we have a, a motion by Councilman Gorder to nominate Jill Hanson to the council and do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a second from Councilwoman Balko. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pause, same sign, motion carried. Next on the agenda is our police chief Mitch Johnson, Johnson?
Johnson.
Not Johnson, sorry Mitch.
Okay, this one's going to be a short, short report here. Basically, we've had 189 calls for service in January, been busy. I don't know if it's the effects of COVID, but we've had, I think, four domestics in the last month. We've had four DUIs, which I think we had a total of seven last year, so I know we had just two more this coming week. So just remind everybody that if you're going to be out drinking and just be responsible and get a sober driver, so people are going to get up, end up getting hurt, so. And another thing is that's been going on is, and I'm sure it's COVID, but we've had some thefts, car break-ins. Last month, we had a rifle that was stolen from a motor vehicle. We're still investigating that incident right now. And we had another vehicle that was broken into that had an auger taken out of the back of the truck. So make sure you guys are locking your doors on both instances that things, things were unlocked. Pay attention to any suspicious activity. Call it in, I don't care how minor it is, at least we'll look into it. But if anybody has any information regarding these thefts, I would love for them to come forward and at least talk to us because we're still working on it, but. But biggest concern right now for us is there's a rifle hanging out there that we don't know who's got it, so we'd hate to run into the wrong way. So I can't remember offhand, but it was in the paper, and we have, yeah, we didn't immediately release it in the paper, so it should be in there. I think it was last couple of weeks ago. But other than that, we've been extremely busy at the Win Academy. I think last year we had a total of 200-some calls there. We've had, last month, we had 167. So a lot of the kids, again, there's a lot of just kids that are having, you know, a lot of them are the same kids over and over again, but we're staying very, very busy up there, so we're glad that we have Ryan up there. So otherwise, we'd be running, I'd be running a lot. Other than that, that's all basically I have. I know we, you talked about the budget thing, I'm looking into that and working on those numbers yet, so, but we'll go from there. Do you guys have any other questions from us, or from me, I should say?
Any questions for Mitch? Okay. Thank you, Mitch. Next item on our agenda is for water and sewer. Randy, I don't know, do you have any issues right now? Okay. Move on to the next item on our agenda is that I just want to mention that with the appointment of Jill Hansen to the city council, we have a vacancy in our Planning and Zoning Commission, and they usually meet the first Tuesday of the month at nine o'clock, and so if anybody knows of anybody that would be interested in serving on Planning and Zoning Commission, please let the office know or let one of the council know, and we'd like to fill that position as soon as possible. Next on the agenda is the fire department. Doug, do you have anything about the fire department?
The only thing I really have is we did get four applicants for the fire department. We have three vacancies, so we're going to start interviews actually tomorrow as far as that goes. We'll let you know what we come up with the next meeting and go from there.
Okay. Thank you. And you were looking to fill three positions?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
If somebody is looking for that, do we tell them to come to you, or have you got it out there?
We have the applicants already. We have the applications already.
Yeah.
Next one's at the end of the month, last month.
Yep. Next item on the agenda is to look at Resolution 2021-01, to amend that resolution to designate the Starbucks city website, the official city website, as our official posting...
Am I saying that right?
Where we're going to post all notices for meetings and so forth on our city website. And if you're not familiar with it, you can go to the city website, and there's a calendar on the front page, and there's stars and the pertinent days of the month, and you can click on that star, and it shows what, you know, what the meeting is or what is going on, and you can also look at all the agendas and the meeting minutes and the videos that we have of the council meetings and so forth. So we'll still post notices on the door like we used to, and we'll still notify the newspapers of our meetings, but the official site will be the website from now on, or at least I'd like to make it that. So if I could have a motion to do that, I would appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to accept the resolution, or amended resolution, 2021-01.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Tafe on the table. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a second from Councilwoman Balko. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Next item on the agenda is, in your packets are some quotes for a new computer server and computers for the office. As I mentioned in my statement, we're currently unable to back up all of our information. We have outdated software, really outdated software, and we don't have the optimal security that we need. So the quotes that you see are for roughly, what was it, $6,000, I think, $6,400. So I think it's something that's absolutely necessary and that we need to go ahead with at this time despite our budget difficulties, so we'll just have to come up with the money someplace. So I don't know if there's any questions from the council or discussion, but I'd like a motion to approve the purchase and installation of a new server and computers for the office. These are coming from a company that, I don't know, does he own the company? It's Joan. Who are we talking about that provides the service and so forth? Mitch, do you know?
Mitch's computer tech, it's Ryan Erickson.
Ryan Erickson, so a local fellow that operates out of Fargo, but it's a substantially lower offer than we've had from our normal computer people, so...
Well, I'll make a motion that we get ahold of Ryan and go ahead with that.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilwoman Balko to approve the purchase and installation of the new computer system in the office, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any further discussion?
I guess I have a question, and that is on follow-up maintenance and any of that type of thing, is he capable of that as well?
We think he is. We'll make sure that he is before we go ahead.
I'm talking to Steve on that. He did all our computers, and he took them down and dropped them out.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. With the changes in the council, we also need to make some appointments which are on our, which are in our packet, and that is, that's also Resolution 2021-01, and we need a second signer on the city accounts, and I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Chris Tafe to be a signer on the city accounts in addition to myself and Joan Kirkwhite. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
So we have a motion from myself and seconded by Councilman Gorder to approve Chris Tafe as a signer on the city checking accounts. The next item that we need to look at is appointment of a new vice mayor or mayor pro temp, and I'd like to make the motion that we appoint Steve Gorder as the vice mayor or mayor pro temp.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have my motion to approve Steve Gorder as the vice mayor or mayor pro temp, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
The last item on the agenda is an extension of the local emergency declaration for COVID-19. I'm very proud of how Pope County has done during this pandemic. I think we've only suffered five deaths in the county, and that's only exceeded by Big Stone County, which I think has three. So I'll, you know, at least in this western, west-central part of the state, I'm not sure about some of the northeastern counties, but our death rate has been very, very low, and so I would encourage everybody to not let their guard down because we have new variants from the UK and South Africa and Brazil floating around, so I would like to extend that emergency to the end of March and ask everybody to continually, continue to be vigilant, so...
I'll make a motion we extend the local emergency declaration for COVID-19 to the end of March.
I'll second that.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilman Gorder to extend the local emergency declaration for COVID-19 to March 31st, seconded by Councilman Tafe. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. So that concludes our agenda items, and...
I'll make a motion we adjourn the regular meeting.
Okay. Do we have a second?
I said.
Okay. So we have a motion to adjourn by Councilman Gorder, seconded by Councilwoman Balko, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.